Okay, everybody. Welcome to the public hearing on our CDBG grant application for this year. And so we all get clear on this? Let's get official. Please take notice that public hearing will be held by the Village Board of Trustees of the Village of Tivoli on September 18th, 2019, 7:00 p.m. local time at the Village Hall here, ABC Broadway, Tivoli, to hear all interested persons on the application for a community development block grant. Input from citizens and groups is solicited regarding persons or by directing comments in writing to the Village Board of Trustees. Mr. Druck wants to place your hall. Well, I think I hear some public coming. Great. Hey, Tom.
Good.
So, we have Ryan Louts from Crawford Associates here to present a proposal for this grant. And why don't you show us what you have.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Motion to open the public hearing?
Aye.
So move.
Second.
That would be trustee Azrati, followed by trustee Cole. Aye. Got it. So.
I'm Ryan Louts from Crawford Associates Engineering. We're here with the village to discuss a proposal per the 2020 CDBG. One of their areas of interest this year is park renovations. After a meeting with Mayor Griffith at the Park at Tivoli, we identified a number of areas that could be improved, renovated, modified, to just kind of upkeep the park. And this is in no specific order. One of the first items that we discussed was the covered pavilion. The roof on that pavilion has some holes in it. So the current application is actually to replace the roof. However, we do have an alternate in there to patch it if for some reason funding comes up. And I guess one of the things I'll bring up now is funding. The maximum allowable for this grant is $150,000. Based on the estimate which preliminarily we had created, it would surpass that amount. However, we do a lot of alternates just as the takeoffs. If for some reason we want, the village would like to do something over something else, we'll continue going through the items here and discuss that further. Staying with the pavilion, another thought was to repave or resurface underneath the pavilion. The blacktop isn't in terrible condition, but that's one of the things that Mayor Griffith thought would be a nice cleanup thing. Additionally, with the pavilion, another thought was to install a security camera on the north, or excuse me, on the west side of the building, kind of facing the bathrooms as it was identified as that as some area where there's been some graffiti and things like that. I guess moving into the bathroom, I know that was another area of interest, and one of this proposal would include removing that front fascia on the building. It's a little bit beat up and it could definitely use a facelift, so part of that would be replacing a fascia board, as well as going in and repainting the bathrooms and making them look new, and then replacing, I think, some of the hand towel drawers and things like that. Minor revisions in there. One of the other things was going to be to trim back some of the vegetation around it, clean that up, kind of the looking area. Another thing that's part of this application will be to repave or resurface all of the pathways throughout the park, and also extend them to a width of five feet, making them ADA compliant at all points. And going into the ADA, there's currently a small area here for a parking spot. So with this, we're going to either, I believe we were planning on relocating it, but for now we're leaving it here, just repainting that with signage for a handicap parking stall. That one's still up in the air if we want to move it, but I didn't exactly know if we could fit it in down here, but it is there currently. That was something we would definitely want to do to increase the ADA ability here. Another item was going to be this play area here, which is in dash. It actually is two play areas, and there's two here, just for simplicity. I left them as just two rectangles. This one has some area in there. So we did include an allotment for a few items and things like that for new equipment. I mean, I have a large catalog here. If any one member of the board would like to take a look at it. I mean, prices range from thousands to hundreds of thousands. So there's an allotment in that for up to, right now it's around $20,000 for equipment. So looking at that, the typical slide ladder combinations around 10. So you could fit two of those or something more elaborate or simpler, depending on how those all fall into play. I guess I can lay the catalog with the village for anyone that wants to take a look at it. Continuing with the proposal, another item was going to be the fence around the ballfield from inspections and things like that. It's a little bit beat up, so one of the opportunities there would be to replace that fencing. And again, it would be around the entire ballfield. It didn't include the backstop, but that's something else if we would like to continue further with that. That was another item there. Another item was going to be replacing all the bollards along this front edge, cleaning up that area, just as a safety thing there. Some of them are rotting, so they're not really effective anymore. And then one other idea or proposal here was going to be installing the benches. I know the ones out there are not very user-friendly and some are very old. I know we just did a project along Pine Street, so we're going to try to incorporate some of those style benches into this as well. And that kind of generalizes the majority of our application. Again, does anyone else have any other thoughts for this area proposal?
You mentioned that the, that was an area that was solicited by the county. It was a good use of these funds. Because we have been working in this area and have been fortunate to receive two of these grants, which is great for a small municipality. One where we improved the bus stop and the other where we're improving the drainage out on the other side of Pine Street. So this, finishing this would really sort of complete the project. And we're doing the walkways, the marked walkways and so forth to facilitate people walking into the park from the village hall, so.
Absolutely. And another application was for the crosswalk grant. That was awarded as well. So there's a crosswalk application, CDBG project.
Yeah, so kind of pulls it all together as one large project.
And is there a theme that is being sort of given preference this year?
Park renovations was one. I think ADA is always a big thing. That's why we did incorporate a lot of the ADA items, because they like to see that. And that's a big stepping stone in a lot of areas is bringing things up to ADA compliance.
And we've been promising an ADA swing here for a long time, so.
That, yes, that currently is, I think here. I'm not sure if they've completed it, but it's been in the works. Yes, that was one of the things Mayor Griffiths and I talked about first, saying you already have it and it's being installed. So there are a few items in this catalog that do actually are ADA and for the handicap and things like that, so that.
And we've seen a lot of increase in the use of the park simply because we put in the skate rink, skate ramp and the new basketball deck stuff.
Yeah, there were a bunch of kids over on the ramp today.
So, Madam W., I think one of the things you want to ask at this hearing is not just to talk about this proposal, but to ask whether there are other ideas from the village, about other applications they would want to make for CDBG purposes.
And how long does?
This is for the hearing tonight. That's what, to hear, so.
So, to the public, are there any suggestions for other proposals? Tom?
For?
What would you like CDBG money to be spent on?
To be applied for.
Applied to? How, what should we apply?
How far?
And it would be within sort of the themes of, you know, so like the sidewalks, the crosswalk, that kind of thing is what?
We had advertised this hearing fairly broadly. We spoke about it at our last meeting. So we did anticipate that people would have the opportunity to suggest other things. But I don't see any other suggestions at this time.
More public at this time.
Still, still like to hear from you, but we will close the hearing right before seven.
Motion? Do we leave the hearing open for a few moments in case anybody runs in with an idea or?
I move that we close, I'd like to hear it at this time.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Ryan.
I'll leave you with this catalog. I can send you a digital version. It just, it was a large file, so I just got this printed before I left today. Like I said, it ranges in price. There's a lot of different things, some more artsy than others, some standard and everything in between that you could think of. Absolutely.
Great, okay. Fantastic. Thank you for.
Thank you.
Now we go to the meeting. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Ryan. All right, well, I guess it's time to call the meeting to order. So please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Let's begin this meeting with a clerk's report.
Very good. They're all numbered.
Thank you for numbering.
Absolutely. So, for the past month in the village clerk's office, two K-rolls were processed, 533 trash tags were sold. Couple of projects that the deputy clerk has been working on, planning zoning, so it's been, you know, things have just been cruising along quite busy, as always. I'm sure Mr. Christie will chit chat about it, but for myself, I would like to thank those who supported the fire department and came to the barbecue those couple Saturdays ago. Trust me, Cole, I saw you, but I never got a chance to talk with you, but it was great to see as many people there. And it was a beautiful day, it was absolutely fantastic. And just as a bit of a tidbit heads up, the clerk's office will be closed on Monday, October 14th, in observance of Columbus Day.
Okay. Thank you very much. You're welcome. Since this is sort of upcoming events time, do you, would you like to talk about?
Street painting?
Yeah.
Sure. Okay. In about 10 days, a little over a week, the street painting festival will be taking place on Broadway between the Pine Street extension and the Four Corners, as long as it doesn't rain. So I'm asking for everybody to make their own special bequest to the rain gods that they should hold off on Saturday, because it's always easier if we don't have to change to a rainy day. So far, it's looking good, and we hope that will happen. The, our registrars have been working very hard. They have over 75 people already registered, and they have closed registration. The reason that we do that is that on Saturday morning, there are a whole lot of people who come who didn't register. And if we fill up all the pre-registrations, what tends to happen is a lot of those people or a few of those people don't come at 9 o'clock. So we have a person wanting a square, a square reserved, and nobody on it. So we like to give enough room there so that we can get everybody going on a square. So if you haven't registered, don't panic. Just come at 9 o'clock. We will sign you up and give you some chalk and let you get working on your art. Joe Tobin will be here with the acoustic medicine variety show, as he said, his want. We do have a group of volunteers, but we're always eager to get more. One of the real crushes that morning is sometime between dawn and 9 o'clock in the morning, which is getting to be a narrower and narrower timeframe as the days get shorter, we have to get the streets, all the debris swept off, we have to lay out the squares and we have to paint them. We have 17 rollers this year. We have additional paint pens. I've got two little mixers, so we should be able to get more of it out faster and get more people working on this project so that the squares can be dry by 9 o'clock when people are ready to do it. But if you've done it before, please come again. And if you haven't done it before, you should, it's great fun.
I really, I hate mornings and I love doing this.
So it's usually very quiet, it's a little brisk, we're getting a little fall weather, and you're out there doing this very simple work, and people are talking and occasionally arguing about where the square should be, and it's.
It's the way it happens. Okay, great. And then a couple weeks later, on December 11th, or I'm sorry, October 11th and 12th, we will be having the Eleanor Roosevelt's Conference Symposium Celebration Palooza, all that, so just be here. I, you know, I feel like we, there's so many great things to say about Eleanor Roosevelt, and this is, this is an opportunity to come and sort of see the, you know, sort of the arc of this program. We're going to start on Friday night, and Jeff Urban from FDR is going to be here talking a bit about her and a bit about her childhood, and we're going to have a birthday cake for her. Because October 11th is her birthday. And then on Saturday morning, we're going to have the ribbon cutting ceremony at 10:00 a.m. We have some august speakers, and then we're going to come back here to the village hall where there will be lunch of some sort. And then in afternoon, where we have, so the idea is, we're talking about Eleanor and Tivoli, right? And, and sort of her unhappy childhood and how that, that experience, that loneliness, that, I don't know how to say it, but it informed her ethos moving forward and led to her, you know, impact nature, passion and political involvement.
Human rights, yeah.
And moved into, yes, into her, yeah, her work with human rights, the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, what that means, what that meant then and what it means now. So we have, you know, a great panel put together for later in the afternoon with some commissioners from the Dutchess County Human Rights Commission. We have some folks from the Worker Justice Center. We have some folks from the LGBTQ Center in Kingston, and also we have the Deputy Commissioner for Special Needs coming as well. So we'll have a discussion there. And it's going to be great. So please.
And I was going to say, and I probably won't get it right because you're this historian, but I don't know if many people realize what Eleanor's connection to Tivoli was, but she was actually orphaned. Both of her parents died and her only sibling died.
Oh, no, there was another one.
Okay. But when she was still pre-teens, and she came to live with her maternal grandmother who lived just up the road on Woods Road, and so her community was Tivoli. And one of our notable citizens, Claude Potts, talked about the fact that she and his mother would bring a hay wagon into Tivoli to where they were going to sell their hay from the hay made down up at the Hollis State. And so this is, this is who one of her childhood friends was. And it's, it's really kind of wonderful that we have that connection. And I believe it's that connection that enabled us to receive this bronze round.
So, yes, so through a resident, Larry Cox, we have this amazing bronze bust, which is sitting in the mayor's office right now. And we're creating this, you know, sort of a site of reflection, a site of memory over on Woods Road. And, you know, you can go in there and visit her and, yeah, it's, it's pretty moving.
It's pretty remarkable.
Yeah, so October 11th and 12th, please mark the date on your calendars. I guess it's time for the treasures report. Oh, you have to approve the one minutes. Oh, right. Even with numbers. Yeah. Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, so we have just the one seven minutes. Do we have a motion to approve?
I move that we, the second, and it's the August 21st.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, on to the treasures report. Let's see. The total spent this month was $370,727.72. Out of the general fund, that was $115,217.8. Out of the water fund was $174,596.10. And out of the sewer fund was $80,914.54.
Those are very big numbers compared to our usual. And it's because that this month, we transferred the balances for the water and sewer fund to Dutchess County. And was the general fund impacted by some fire department expenditures? I suspect it was.
Perhaps it was, yes.
And that will be what we'll see is the cost of the repair of the firehouse will flow through the village books and then be reimbursed to us by the insurer. So our budget will be a little funky for a while.
And we'll keep good track of it.
Yes.
Yes, we will. Is there a motion to pay the bills?
So move.
Second. So that was trustee Cole, followed by trustee Azrati. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, yeah. Okay. So is there any public comment on agenda items? Here we have, on the agenda, we're going to be.
We have the zoning report.
Oh, God, actually, we don't. We do not have a zoning report.
Okay.
A motion to pay bills.
Oh, the motion to pay the bills.
We did the pay the bills.
And that was Cole, followed by.
A motion to accept.
Is the treasury report?
There's two motions.
Oh, man, it's like I've never been here before. It's very different here in charge. It's the chair, actually. I sit a couple inches higher and I'm totally uncomfortable with this. Okay, is there a motion to pay the bills?
So move.
I think we did that one. Oh, no. Motion. Treasures report.
To accept the treasures.
Accept the treasures report.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay, there is no zoning report. Let's move on to the agenda items. So what we're going to be doing is accepting the 2019 Village of Tivoli Justice Court audit, which we discussed last week at the workshop. We have a resolution supporting the filing of an amicus curate brief by Dutchess County regarding the Hudson River cleanup by GE. And we have a resolution authorizing the submission of the fiscal year 2020 Dutchess County Community Development Block Grant Program application. So is there any public comment on any of those items? Seeing none, let's get to it. Do we need to read anything off of the justice court audit since we went through it all last week? I mean, they don't seem to be. So is there a motion to accept the justice report? Justice Court audit.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And, you know, do we have a copy of the resolution?
Yeah, it's right behind the.
So shall we take turns? Would you like to start?
Okay, this is a resolution supporting the filing of an amicus curate, curate? I don't know how you pronounce that. Brief by Dutchess County regarding the Hudson River cleanup. Whereas the village has been advised by Dutchess County that Dutchess County will file such a brief with the U.S. District Court for the Northern District of New York in support of the New York lawsuit filed by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency by New York State Attorney General Letitia James, the State Department of Environmental Conservation, and Governor Andrew Cogan. And whereas the suit asserts the EPA violated federal law when in April of 2019, despite indications that concentrations of PCBs, unknown human carcinogen, remain dangerously high in the Hudson River, it issued a certificate of completion to General Electric indicating that GE's PCB cleanup efforts were complete and that the EPA agrees not to sue GE in the future.
And whereas the brief will stress the economic and environmental impacts of the Hudson River on Dutchess County residents, many of whom rely on the river for drinking, water fishing, recreation, tourism, and commerce. And whereas, in its local waterfront revitalization program, the Village of Tivoli has recognized the Hudson River as a unique complex resource and that the tidal bays on the eastern shore of the Hudson River adjoining the village, known as Tivoli Bays, are ecologically unique and important to a variety of species, some of which are species of special concern, and that the Hudson River, including Tivoli Bays, are significant to tourism in the village. And whereas the Hudson River is a unique asset essential to the environmental scenic and economic well-being of the village, which is part of the Hudson River National Historic Landmark District, the Mid-Hudson Shore Scenic District, and Hudson River Heritage Area. And whereas the village is working to restore a former public access area for recreational use on the Hudson River waterfront to enhance recreation and tourism opportunities. And whereas the Empire State Trail route through the village will enhance links to Tivoli Bays, the village's planned recreational access site on the Hudson River waterfront and the village's commercial center. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Tivoli by the favorable vote of not less than majority of all the members of the board as follows. The Village of Tivoli supports the filing of an amicus curate brief by Dutchess County in the above matter. The village urges the court to vacate the certificate of completion until the long-term ecological health of the river is verifiably achieved. So move.
Second.
And we do this by roll call. Trustee Azrati?
Aye.
Trustee Cole?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
And the three of us comprise the majority of the board.
Yes. Yes. Yes, we do. So next we are on to the resolution authorizing the submission of the fiscal year 2020 Dutchess County Community Development Block Grant Program application.
Whereas the Tivoli, the Village of Tivoli is participating in the Dutchess County Community Development Consortium for fiscal year 2020, whereas input from citizens and groups has been received and considered, and whereas an application has been prepared which addresses our community concerns.
Therefore be it resolved that the Dutchess County Community Development Consortium fiscal year 2020 application for the Village of Tivoli is hereby approved with a maximum grant to be applied for of $150,000.
I think I'm going to say for park renovations.
For park renovations. Okay. Dylan?
Be it further resolved that officers of the village are hereby authorized and directed to submit said application to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development and to do all means necessary or commencement in connection therewith.
I move the resolution.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that's each of us.
Yeah, there we go. It's a little funny to do an aye and a second, a movement and a second, and then do a roll call as well. It feels a little redundant.
But we did. But we did. Okay, so the next board meeting will be held Wednesday, October 16th, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. With workshop 6:00 p.m. at the Historic Austin Peister Hall. Our regular monthly workshop is October 9th, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. And Joel will be back. So, did we say where we was? Did we say where we was? Cruising, cruising through Russia and having a wonderful time. Cruising, cruising through Russia and having a wonderful time.
I hope he misses us once in a lifetime opportunity.
Yes, I think he's looking forward to watching this meeting and hopefully be kind when he helps it. Trustee Azrati, would you like to...
I would.
Would you like to meet the justice courts?
I'm going to. Yes, so we had a total of... I'm not quite used to reading this, but there were 34 charges received and 16 charges disposed.
No.
36 and 26. There are some shorthand here that I'm not, violations.
Right, not sure about that. I think we care about the last bit. Yes, the amount collected.
Yeah, and the total amount of fines received from these charges was $1,880, with surcharges of $876. That sounds like some people didn't show up on time. And civic fees of $5 for a total of $2,761, which will be remitted to the state comptroller. A lot of these violations were driving offenses, including failure to keep right, seatbelt violations, stop sign violation. It's the beginning of the year and we do need people to acknowledge their traffic directions and follow them. Well, and I will confess to having just learned the hard way that you need to wear a seatbelt even in the village.
Yes, you do.
Yeah. Actually, they say most accidents occur within five miles of wearing gloves, so it's a good idea. Okay, the low tech program, are we, we're collecting data, right? That will be submitted at the end of this year. And we've been getting regular emails from our wealth management advisors about the choppiness in the market, but the funds seem to be doing well. Solid waste, I would just like to comment, I pay attention, as should you, to the number of garbage bags that are sold. We'd like to get that up to 600 a month. And I'm just going to do a little advertisement here. I use the Village of Tivoli to collect my garbage rather than going to a commercial holler. It costs me about $12 a month, which is about $140 a year to do it that way, which I think is amazing savings. But in addition to that, most of what I get rid of is recycled. I'm a composter, so that's easy. It's picked up right at my door and it's important to package it right. If you're going to recycle cardboard, it should be flat. If you're doing paper, it should also be flat. You should separate the paper from your glass and tin and all of those other forms of recycling. But it is very, very economical and it's good for the planet. So I encourage you all to participate.
I have some thoughts on solid waste.
Do you?
I do, I do. It's hungry raccoons and possum season.
Ah, yes.
So when folks are putting out their garbage, please put it in a can. If it's in a bag, it's going to be scattered.
Yeah.
Also, fall is garbage blowing season or sort of recycling blowing season. And...
Keep it packaged and tied.
Keep it packaged nicely because everything that ends up on the street ends up in the river.
Yes.
Yeah, let's, let's think about that.
I have the benefit that I go to a meeting at 7:30 on Tuesday and so I can bring it out at 7:15. And when I get out back from the meeting, it's gone. I don't give anything time.
Yeah. Trustee Cole?
All right, last night, meeting of the zoning review committee. In that meeting, we were able to finalize the draft of the new site plan law and we'll be sending that to this board for review and consideration. And then began to continue our work on short-term rentals. You'll be hearing more about that in the future as we're, will be drafting and tightening up, coming up with a draft law for the Village of Tivoli. As we move forward with that, you'll be hearing about a public forum. We encourage anyone with, with an opinion or a comment, or actually everyone to come who lives in the village and is impacted by short-term rentals to come and be a part of that discussion. So when a date is set for that, you will certainly be hearing about that. And as soon as we have a date for our next zoning review committee meeting, that will be posted on the village calendar, on the village website. And as always, open to the public to come and observe.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Great things happening at the library, as always. This weekend, local resident Bettina Mueller, who wrote a book called A Tea Garden in Tivoli, right?
Right.
Is doing a workshop on, on a style of Japanese chapala. Japanese flower worship, right? And this is at her house, I believe?
I believe it is. It's in the tea.
In the tea house?
In the tea room.
Yeah, okay, so please go to the Tivoli Free Library website and check out the other events going on. Historic Red Hook has some events happening at Hardscrabble Day. This weekend, events happening out on the green. There's going to be cider pressing and all sorts of things. And you can see the new exhibit in the story studio, which is on apples. And as we all know, apples sort of made Red Hook. And there's a great...
Put it out in the mail, yeah.
It really did come out.
Apples and violets, I believe.
Yeah, I think apples first. And Historic Red Hook has done a lot of work, especially with Bard, doing, doing digital projects on Red Hook apples. And that's, that's pretty cool to see. They have a great collection of apple crate labels, or apple barrel labels, rather, from local farms. And so if you're out and about on Saturday, head on down to the...
Yeah, and if you haven't been to the Almond Dog and their new green, it is well worth the trip over there. It's an astonishingly professional group of people and they have put together some really marvelous... They're, they're not just cataloging sort of history that everybody knows about. They're actually finding stories and new, doing new research and really coming up with, it's just a pretty exciting...
Well, it's creating context, right? Like it's... Yeah, it's taking sort of the, the, the straight out of data, right?
Right.
And turning it into stories and showing how our history informs where we are now and can make us think about where we're going sort of in a different way, but also, you know, reinforcing connections.
And for some of us, this requires us to use more senses than just our eyes and our ears. So it's also important to know that they will have apple pies.
Right, there will be pie.
And they will be sold by some of the young people in the Red Hook schools who do the serving of that. And that makes it really quite an event.
Are you making pies this year, too?
I am not.
Would you like to make a pie?
My dance card is full.
Also, local talent in historic areas up at Olana. Celia Bland, who is a longtime Tivolian and a professor at Bard, is doing a, like a, it's like a walking and writing, sort of a writing from place workshop up there. And I can't remember the date, so if you go to Olana's website and check it out, it looks really good and she's an amazing poet.
Really happening, right?
There's a lot going on with art and landscape and all of it. The really big news, well, one other thing, Montgomery Place. Because it's mushroom season, for all of the people who are mushroom foragers around here, and I know there are a lot, Violetta White Delafield, who lived at Montgomery Place in the 1920s to, I believe, 1949, was a noted mycologist, meaning mushroom person. And she has this amazing, had, and Montgomery Place has it, collection of watercolors that she painted of mushrooms.
Oh, my goodness.
And all of the scientific information. And it's really, it's, it's beautiful stuff and it's online. So check out Bard's Montgomery Place website. You can see the digital, if you just, if you Google Montgomery Place and mushrooms.
And you can do all of those any day except Saturday, that's when you should write the table.
Right.
And Saturday, that's 12.
Right, well, but all this, the mushroom, you can stop watching this. As soon as this means over, you can go over to YouTube or to the Bard website and look at Violetta White Delafield's mushroom collection. So, you know, the biggest news in my mind is the Eleanor Roosevelt Day, October 11th. But the second biggest news is the canoe launch.
No.
I'm glad you're all seated down. No, it's not done. It's not done. In fact, it's not started, but work is slated to begin shortly after Columbus Day. So...
Okay, so there's progress.
So there may be time for a late-season paddle, but definitely by the spring, we're going to be back in business. And meantime, the bays are boasting some lovely red quinetti and ticks.
But we also have, right here in Tivoli, one of the world's renowned ticks experts.
It's true. Let's give a shout out to Felicia Duzin, who knows more about ticks than anyone else.
Yeah, well, Rich.
And Rich. And Rich, sorry. Sorry, Rich. Do we have any other official business?
No, we're tickety-booed.
No more.
We're tickety-booed.
Okay, do we have any public comment?
First of all, like Robin said before, on behalf of the Tivoli Fire Department, company, officers and members, we'd like to thank the people that came out and supported this FD barbecue. That was a huge fundraiser. It turned out really well. Hopefully, we want to also thank Smoking Yankee Barbecue and Clam on Fire Department for using their facilities. Overall, it turned out to be a great day. And move on to another thing. I know you may have heard something already, but back last year, we put a grant in for Scotty Air Packs and a air machine to fill the bottles. Tonight, Delgado's office contacted Tommy and apparently, we put in a grant for $118,000. It looks like we're getting $68,000. It's for the Scotty Air Packs. Unless they got it wrong, I don't know why they would cut us, but whatever. Something's better than nothing. So we need to, we just got to find out the whole thing. But as of right now, I think it's Friday, they will make the announcement official that we're getting the funding for the Scotty Air Packs.
That's fabulous.
So that's huge savings for the village.
You've been getting some of these grants with regularity. You've got one for...
We put, we put one in every year and we have to, we, we, again, we pay our grant writer to, to write the narrative. It goes through me, I check it over. If it looks good, we let it go. If it don't, go back to them and they, they do their thing until, until I think it's right. And then we, what do you call, usually costs us about $500 to do that. Then if we get accepted for the grant, depending on how much money you're asking for or what the money is, it's been averaging, we pay 5% of the grant. So if we get $68,000, we got to pay $3,300. So the fire, fire department usually pays for that with the letters that we send out every year.
To the grant writer, you lose them. You pay them, to the grant writer?
No, they only get $500.
Oh, okay.
No, this is the federal government says, it's, it's like a matching, not a matching thing, but you got to pay towards the grant. Okay, so you pay, you can either pay 5% or 10%. In our case, we pay 5%. And like I said, it's $3,300. That money comes from the letters that we send out every year. We extra donations and stuff, that's what we pay for that equipment and stuff. I don't know how the building's coming along. I don't, I haven't heard anything yet. We are in the process of, some of these people know that, we're in the process of putting the addition on to the, to the firehouse. It's a work in progress. And the money that was raised from that fundraiser will be used at some point towards that...
Addition.
Towards that addition. Like I said, we'd also like to thank the people that have been sending in checks, fire departments and municipalities, libraries. I mean, we've getting checks from everywhere. Westchester County, all of the places sending stuff, Long Island. We like to thank those people. And there are thank you cards going out to everyone, so...
How many so far, Ron?
126. I didn't count.
So there, there, now it's just been a little behind the time. You had to have cards made up and stuff, so...
Tell me, how is the temporary house, the temporary housing working?
We'll let you know when the wind and the snow starts flying. It, it, it gets a lot, the water gets in, it goes through the...
Because it just sits on the ground, yeah.
No, it goes on, it, when it drains off the grass, it goes onto the building. There's nothing you can do about that. Overall, it's not that bad. It, we'll see how it goes when the winter comes.
So we did, we have progress on the, on the contract. We did get specs from Crawford this week. So we're finalizing the contract now and we should be able to be moving forward fairly soon.
Okay.
We've been working with deliberate speed on these.
But it'll, it'll get done, I'm sure. There's no problem with that. Like I said, as members, we just want to thank everybody for the great, the great support we've been given. And there are going to be other things going on. Oh, yeah, that was the other thing, was we still have our 100th anniversary t-shirts available if anybody still wants to buy.
Could you bring them to street paint?
We probably can do that.
That would be great. That would be great.
That's a good idea, yeah. And if people that aren't from around, or who may be from around here who no longer live here want them, how can, who's the best person to direct them to?
Mark is in charge of the shirts. Okay, so you would, what we did this last, the last group of shirts that we ordered, we took a list. You named, I put on the list, the shirts came in. We, we handed the shirts out to them to get, to get the money. We don't, you know, we like to get the money upfront. So that's why we know you're buying the shirts and not put us into a thing where we buy the shirts and then we're stuck with it.
How much are you charging for this?
The shirts are $20.
$20? And that exceeds the, the cost of the shirts that goes as a donation towards the, the new building?
Yep.
For the, the addition.
Yeah, I'm good.
Anything else? Is there anything I forgot about?
I don't think so.
No?
It was a good meeting.
Is the motion for adjourned?
I move, we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming.